Personally, I forgot how to do all this stuff. Everybody, I guess, got a copy of the meeting post and the agenda, can add a motion to accept the agenda?
No, I'm not.
Second, all in favor?
Yes.
I... I didn't bring the script, but just for, I think you all remember, the town council meeting is being recorded, so be thoughtful about what you say and whatever you say to be recorded for all posterity. I don't have any minutes. Kelly is not here, she's in Thailand, who's been helping us with the minutes, so we'll skip that over. My game plan for today, this is the first meeting since we've had together since the town meeting back in, on May 3rd. I wasn't here, and then the election. Hi Lucy, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. So I thought, maybe it's just the first subject is, and I know it's going back in time a little bit, so what do people think about the two non-voting votes at the town meeting and on the election ballot? What do you think it tells us, if anything?
What it tells me is 4% of the people that are eligible to vote voted in favor. And one of the problems that we're gonna have all along is getting more than 10% of the people to show up because 90% of them aren't going, aren't voting, didn't go to the ballot. And so what we've got to do is reach out to that group and encourage them to at least show their feelings behind it.
Okay? Rachel?
I heard a few things commented on telling me for people, well, obviously more opposed, they're moving, but that I did think were quite accurate, so I think to me it's getting some of those responses or some more information out there in some way. I think the social media, I think is a good way to start, probably would have been a little more active on that, since where a lot of people look, but I think we need to do a little bit more, we should have done a little bit more comparatives than what it's now to what it could be.
Yeah, I agree with their comments. I thought that the, we also had the vote early in town meeting, right? I think a lot of people were still coming in and sitting down and, you know, I don't think they were having time to focus on it or and it the way some people characterized it was that we were voting on town, you know, having that as a form of government rather than just sticking into it, which I did try to clarify. stood up, but it is a little tricky because I think some people don't fully understand the form of government they have now. And so it almost to them seemed like they thought it was an expansion of the select board instead of no, this is entirely different and that's probably to do some work to educate people, just so they understand that, whether they want to move in that direction or not.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of, I think all of them just indicate that there wasn't enough information out there, there wasn't enough time for people to digest what it could be and kind of the comparatives, I think it's interesting in that sense. And it's a big change and it takes a lot to, even for small changes, to educate the general public about what those changes are gonna be, and it's not something that we were directly tasked with by the article to do a full public outreach campaign with, and I just think without that, it's just gonna kind of spin its tires.
On my part?
The ballot was encouraging. Well, you know, let's start with the town meeting when probably was suspected. We do have to work on the public outreach. And I think that's our next step.
Thoughts?
That's at the moment.
I would like to add something. Last year, we hit the area associations, both Wisconsin and so on. I think we should try to do that again because even though these are summer residents, they do talk people to vote. And I think, obviously, we need to go rotary. Bo and I talked to the builders. There were other groups we have to go to, but I would not mind going back to Wisconsin, again, that's a big population and saying, here's what happened and there's why we think we should keep going, so I volunteer to do that with you or without you, I think that's appropriate.
Some of the folks online, Donna, do you have any thoughts?
I just want to say that the link isn't working, sorry.
Sorry?
The automatic link for Zoom isn't working, Donna and I are clearly on, but it's, the public might not be able to get on.
Oh.
Just to leave, so.
There's lots of people on, so.
Okay.
Yeah, Donna, you first, Caroline, then I'll see if you have a comment.
We had our non-voting taxpayer meeting on Saturday. One comment was, is there any opportunity for a compromise as far as a new form of government? As far as town council, that was raised by somebody. And, and the other thing is, and I don't know, pardon me, because I was on late. Maybe, do we have to ask people what in particular is bothering them about this? It struck me that after watching the annual town meeting on Zoom, that people are just loving the tradition and they seem to be very hesitant about change. I mean, the article, Chris Perry's article interviewing you and Curtis, Joe, I thought it was very good. But the thing is, it was very logical. It explained that, you know, we're a $300 million corporation and, and my comment in Saturday's meeting is nobody runs a $300 million corporation once a year. I mean, all these things are logical. And yet people are like, well, we want to meet and greet. And actually, my response would be, yes, we can meet and greet, you can meet and greet twice a month instead of once a year. So I, we were trying to figure out what the real obstacle is. And, and I wish that when, when you guys were doing the the public sessions during the winter, I was able to Zoom two of them. And people were not coming up with many concrete objections, it was more emotional, but that's, that's my take.
Okay, Caroline, you have anything you want to throw in?
No, I just, I didn't mean to interrupt, I just wanted to alert that the Zoom link didn't seem to be working on the town site.
Got you. I think that's all the committee members. Anthony, if you don't mind, I'm gonna throw my comment in, then I'll, maybe you and your colleagues might have a comment or a thought. I, you know, just in terms of my reaction, I was disappointed. I, you know, at town meeting, the proportions of the loss, if you will, were greater than I expected. I mean, it was, it was kind of 25% to 75%, and more like 30 to 60, and I guess I expected or hoped for a little bit better. The numbers were better at, at the election, but I really thought we'd actually have a majority on that, I was sort of surprised that that a thousand voters, you know, sort of voted in support of town meeting, considering only 450 showed up with town meeting. But I also think that if it's something that the committee or the group wants to continue with, I mean, I think we have to do a better job at outreach and education, as difficult as outreach and education is, I mean, we had three info sessions and I bet we didn't have 75 people between the three of them, so how do you actually reach voters, I think is a huge, it's a problem, it's hard to do. So, I mean, I just, my job like that, I suppose, I was, I think the biggest surprise was on the ballot, I really thought we would have a majority, but we did. Anthony, any, any thoughts or sort of overview from your, your perception of what happened here or what happened so well?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll, so we're primarily here, primarily here to sort of listen and and answer sort of any technical questions that may come up, and I'll circulate the group, but one thing that we did discuss internally is around putting these sort of referenda before the town meeting and the voters that may have that may have had like an unintended consequence in the sense that, you know, usually the committees will have finished their document and then will have done a report about how they got to there, and so that, that's at least a point where members of the committee can go and sort of, you can always point people to say, here's how we got here and here's what they said, whereas versus the sort of summary that they got. And, you know, as this group has probably experienced in this process, moving to a different form of government, thinking about it conceptually is different than actually saying, we get to choose our former government and here's the things that we have addressed to make our, to address our concerns versus oh, we think a town council former government is X or Y. So something we just thought about is that maybe the I, I know you haven't finished the report yet, but maybe publishing, finishing and publishing those documents may actually be helpful in the future as you'll got, you'll have something for people to point to. But I'll stop there, Mel or Pat, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to share with the group. I'm seeing head shakes, so.
All right.
I'm curious if we can find out why Amherst or how Amherst broached. I mean, they, they had a split vote, but they passed it, and I'm curious what they did that we didn't do, it might be helpful. We might reach out to that.
I think, I think in Andover, right?
In Andover? Andover.
Andover, I seem to remember the one minute it was, he was here. They, they ran over years, I think it was like a year's worth of outreach and education type session with lots, I seem to remember.
And they had a good vote, you know, they had passed it.
Right. I think it ultimately passed 55 or 45, so it's, I don't think we're ever, you're ever gonna get a title win.
Well, the same thing happened in Barnstable, you know, my, my anchor there. It was like 3,000, yes, 2,000, no, it was not 5,000 to zero in Barnstable, right? You don't have that. But here again, what, if it's Andover, what did Andover do that we might learn from?
Joe, Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, it was Amherst, Andover is the largest open town meeting in the Commonwealth, so.
Okay, it was Amherst.
It's Amherst, okay, thanks.
Charlie was not wrong the first time.
Well, they were right.
Yeah. I've been very wrong many times.
Okay, so.
I guess as a, to piggyback on unintended consequences, I do know with the sense of the meeting, there's been some chocolate, you know, our funding's pretty much gone, we're likely not getting more. Is there a direction that we know in terms of this committee? I assume we're not gonna be dissolved, we'll continue as a town committee, but we'll have to do it with our own resources or at all efforts that. So, you're right.
I think you're onto something and it sort of gets to the what do we want to do next, but does anybody on the, on the members of the public that'd like to make a comment or thought?
Very briefly, I went to the planning board on Monday and it was their first meeting of the post-election. And three members, both the newest member, midterm member, and a senior member talked about the feeling that there's a lack of transparency in town government. That's a general feeling that would explain some of the things that you're getting and hearing from a different direction. They just don't trust town government. So I don't know, are you, is this committee a victim of that distrust of town government? Or a cause, are you one of the causes why people feel town government is not transparent? I have no idea, but I just report that to the committee as you'll quote.
I don't know. First, Jeremy?
I guess I think we really have a communication issue more than we have to. And when we adopt whatever communication law we can do, lots of it ignore outreach. But I think we have to define people better, what is the problem? And we know that much of the voting are not willing to look through all the work they've done. So I think I think it's correct, we need a final product when we continue the communication, but we have to really unfortunately, in many ways, we have to come up with a better messaging. As to what is the problem and what does this do and what did we look at? So you can get through a lot of these important issues, you have trust or transparency, or what are they really looking at or what? So I would say, I think it's really a communication issue on top of we have to recognize this in the process. And we all want it sort of a single phone hand where we come to the vote, but it may take multiple votes, again, people in that direction. But I don't know if any of that's helpful, but again, I, I think there's a lot of confusion, we have to recognize voters won't take their time. They need to be presented something that they thoroughly understand. And we have a complex situation here, but we haven't rendered it down to its essence, I believe, to most of the voters.
Well, I'm just gonna throw another two of my two cents, and it seems to me that, you know, because of practical matter, we, we review the various types of town, town government that are available. We, with Allen Center Health, we composed a new draft charter that would be a town council form of government charter, about the town and accounting. And I think the committee owes the select board, which sort of put us together, a, a final or a, I don't know if you want to final it or a report that says, here's all the things that we did and we came to this conclusion, we think that this would be a good idea for the town. And I, and in a certain sense, that kind of brings to a close one's phase of this committee. And then, then I think we have to decide, all right, what do we want to do? Do we want to keep working at this? Do we want to I mean, if you look at the article, the article says we're supposed to your Curtis's article, our formative article says, we're supposed to put an article in front of town meeting at a future town, at a future town meeting. So as a to-do, that is something else that we probably ought to tick off and say, okay, let's, let's compose it, you know, we've done all the things, all the steps that the formative article said we're supposed to do. We put an article in front of town meeting, a real one, not a non-voting one. That would be a vote that will be up or down one way or the other.
Have we reported to the select board other than in phone?
No, no, and I think, I think that's one of the things that one of us to do is that I'd like to see come out as, to say at this meeting is, I think we should write the report. I don't think it has to be an encyclopedia, but I think we should write a report, select boards. We've done all these things, we've met 42 times or whatever it's been. And, you know, so, and here's the charter that we, we with the Collins Center, you know, created.
Take that.
And then the question is, to me anyway, doesn't, Joe Grous is, I mean, do we stay a committee that's kind of connected to the select board and the town of Nantucket, because obviously they, they funded this, and I think Rachel would be right, I don't think they're gonna be too enthusiastic about giving this money or money. Nor do I think they really need it. But maybe it's time to think about should, should the group that is promoting the idea of town council dissociate itself from the town, from the select board and become a PAC or, I don't, I don't really know those things, but and, and are this, does this group of people want to continue working on that? Because maybe not everybody, maybe everybody is sort of, I've done my, you know, people have done their time and they'd like to move on, we should finally move on, so I don't know.
Question about Amherst, was that, did, if they took an article to town meeting, was it sponsored by the select board or was it a citizens?
I'll see if I can find it.
I do think there's some value in upcoming from the citizens or something, it's that I've done a little bit more controversial than others, and it puts the select board in a bad spot to look great. Look forward this article, and by the way, we're gonna give them a much better pay raise, like, I don't know, just optically, does that look great, I'm not saying should be, no, but we don't want to put them in that position, so I, I think no matter who would put the article forward, I don't see it coming from them. Right? I think it would come from other people.
Well, it was a citizens' article anyways, should have come out of the committee.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I, I guess I was thinking it would be a citizens' article. Is there gonna be a special town meeting this whole, or is that, that sounded like that was fading, right?
Well, the court case has scrambled everything, so we'll save.
Yeah. It just, again, it seems to me like there is another long journey ahead to try to, you know, if people really, really want to promote and continue to educate people and get the town converted to a town council former government. I think it's, I think there's still a lot of work to be done, I think it's largely an outreach and education and communication. And I think it might, I, I don't know anything about how forming, about forming a PAC or some sort of citizens' group, but I think it might be a citizen, you know, some sort of group that is separate from town government, from council, that keeps them out of the, keeps, you know, the select board out of the, out of the loop, if you will, in terms of promoting this as a change for the town.
Could I also add, if we did do a report, maybe in there we could identify some other things that we liked a lot and that, that maybe could change sooner than later. You know, paying them certain favors that, so.
Sorry, like, sure.
Like paying the select board members, I mean, is that something that could identify, because that's something somebody could amend on town floor. Stand up and just do that budget, so. You know, maybe there's some things in there that you, you all like that you want to highlight as doing that sooner than just saying, oh, we're only gonna do that if we go to town council. Just in the interest of the government, it seems like some of those things would be like if we thought a board should be appointed versus elected, but we didn't really make any changes like that. Yeah, but that's why I was talking, like, the salary thing to me is, yeah, the biggest change is.
I mean, I have no objection to giving the select board a raise, you know, so that as, as something that we've set for town.
Joe, if I may, I wanted to just make a few comments before we moved on to another topic. Thinking about Jeremy's comment and the speaker before him. We, we have all spent a ton of time, we started in 2023, and we've been working very hard to do exactly what Curtis's article bid us to do, and I think we should feel really good about all the work that we've done, we've really looked into it very hard, very carefully. And we have definitely communicated with members of the public. However, we did not write a report and therefore we did not have a product to really put forth. And I agree that that was a downfall because our work simply cannot be called up and looked at with ease for the members of the public to see what product are we even, you know, touting. And I, I'm disappointed that we didn't have something for the public and I, in terms of the type of communication that we used, I don't think it was effective, I think nowadays there's a lot of social media that is used for communication, even municipally. And I know Bo started a Instagram page, but it seemed that that was only at the end and maybe only one person was doing that from our group, and so I, I believe, as much as some of us might find it odious, that social media really is the most effective way of communicating to the members of the public and, and can transmit better, can communicate better what our product is, and that's just the modern era. And I don't think it's fair to us and our group and how much work we've done, or to the members of the public, the voters, to not be utilizing that means of communication. Because I think that was the downfall, whether you were voting for or against town council. I just don't think the voters had enough information, and I'll end my comment with at the planning board meeting on Monday where they presented, where Barrett Consulting presented the new master plan prospects. Judy Barrett made a very interesting comment about transparency. In her study of Nantucket and our master planning process, what she is aware of is that there's an immense amount of information, an immense amount of activity that the town governance is doing and producing that simply isn't the, the public doesn't have time or interest or even know how to access it. And therefore, she felt, her interpretation was, that's what's causing a transparency complaint. People feel that that transparency is a problem, but really, it's a lack of access and a lack of communication, and people are it, it's not just the governance that's not communicating, it's that people are not listening and they're not accessing what is there and available. So I think that's really a key for our group, whatever it is that we decide. Thanks.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, no, go for it.
I just wanted to clarify that Amherst Charter, their form of government change, was adopted through the charter, elected charter commission process. So if you are looking to kind of compare processes, they, they did not have a town meeting vote, it was the elected charter commission that went directly to the voters. And that was, that was, I think, the last community that did change their former government in Massachusetts. In 2010, the town of Bridgewater changed their former government from a town to a council forum, and I believe they did it through a committee and through a special act that had to be passed by the town meeting, so you might want to talk to Bridgewater, see about their experiences.
All right, so where do we go from here?
I just want to add that one thing that we could do is ask Brian, Libby and the board where the original funding for the Allen Center came from, what mechanism, and then what count? I think that would probably be a good thing, just as a thing to ask. Because it might be legislative and still be legislated.
I was probably out of big cash, Joe.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I don't know if you remember Tom, where, where Libby spent the $35,000 that we used to pay the poll.
It's not detailed on there, so.
I want to say it was in the county budget.
That's all right, that's all right.
I can look up pending contracts.
Okay, good. Well, at least find out.
Yeah.
Well, I agree with Joe, I just want to finish my thought. I agree with you that we should go alone. It's fine. Form a PAC and first of all, let's get the charter that we drew up done and then organize the way we would prefer to go that way.
We need to submit the report to the SLY, to the Tranch, all that together, and that will give us the next step after.
Right.
Jeremy, yes?
I'm sorry, Jeremy.
I just said, the question away from what? I mean, that process all sounds great. There are a lot of the comments, we do have a sense of how we might summarize the things behind the, you know, votes. Has anyone really been able to distill what is the essence of what people think about? Away from, they were uninformed, they, they like corporate entertainment twice a year, you know, what do we think it was? Do you have any sense of that?
I mean, I'm, I'm looking at Lucy here, but I, I think there are, you know, there are clearly a thousand people in this town who like town meeting, they think it works just fine. They don't see any particular reason to change, they don't see that this is, that, that what, that the issues that we believe are problems for the town are that big, that big a deal, and I don't know, Lucy, do you want to, you know?
Sure, yeah, I mean, I, I do feel like the public was not educated, a lot of town council was, I mean, I spoke to somebody the other day and she said she voted for town council because you can vote from home, you know? So, I mean, I like open town meeting and I, I think that we haven't really, why not concentrate on fixing what open town meeting is? I think Donna said at a meeting last Saturday that, you know, have it two or three times a year. And I, like what Jill is saying, you know, forty thousand dollars for, I mean, to fit select board, I mean, that is in the right direction. And um, yeah, I mean, why not have it four nights? I I don't feel like that we've tried to make open town meeting better. Like, what are the issues? Again, I go back to, and in Amherst and Amherst, like I said, Mandy that we spoke about, like, they had such, like, the public was part of the whole way. And they had a Facebook page and anybody who would write for it or against it, that was almost the front of Facebook page. And it was so open and the public felt he's he's a part of it. And I love that there was five, four, and three against it and one abstained, you know, it felt that it was very balanced. Yeah, there was. And they were, but it was, I think it was like maybe a year, by eighteen months, and you were, but it was like the public were part of the whole.
Yeah, and I and I don't disagree. I mean, I think that, you know, three, the three meetings that we had leading up to our meeting were just three meetings. And, you know, the the story that I remember from, I can't think of the woman's name, from Amherst, we um, spoke with one of our supposed to be uh, non-voting taxpayers, I think it's uh, a meeting we'd like to I mean, it's it's kind of like they had dozens and dozens of sessions over a period of whatever it was, a year um, leading up to the to the final vote. Um, so I think we could have benefited. I mean, I I'm not really, I'm not criticizing that we, I think we people did a lot of work. I think we put a lot of time into this, but one of the things that I take away from the two votes is, it's a lot of work to try to educate, communicate, and in some sense convince people that the change is necessary. And to me, that says, you know, looking at over the, you know, looking out forward, I feel like we ought to wrap up this sort of phase of the project, write the report, get to the select board, we got the two charters. Um, and then I think the committee has to think about who wants to, who wants to stay on, who wants to continue to work? Should we recruit additional people to be part of this? Because I I think we would separate, I I like the idea of separating ourselves from the select board appointing us. But I don't know what, you know, the rest of you think about that, or do you, you know, and and whether people want to put the time and effort um, into this. I will, I will be perfectly honest, this has already taken more time for me firstly than I was expecting. So I would like to retire at the end of this year, pass on to, pass the chairmanship on to somebody else.
It sounds like initiatives like this are festive. They are more citizen-led. But because we needed to actually have experts weigh in, I think that we did it the right way and we did it in a very transparent way. We had a couple of meetings, they were appointed. I I think that we've done the right thing. Um, but I do think we should produce a report and in that report say what maybe the recommendation is that it should be a citizen-led initiative, just say that. Um, you know, and I obviously thank this board and the town for all the time and resources they did give us. But the best, you know, initiatives on the island often are citizen-led articles. I think that's true. But to what Jeremy was asking about why, you know, there are many answers, many answers to that question, in my view, Jeremy, as there were voters. Like, everybody has their own reason for being a yes or a no. But one thing I said from the beginning, and I still feel this way, is that it will be really hard in this environment where we you know, there's not a ton of land left. But there's a, there are a lot more zoning articles every year, and I think it's hard for people to want to give that up. I think that will be the greatest challenge going forward, personally. I think some of the other things, obviously, the the budget articles, they don't even get called that much. And they didn't, but when it came to zoning, there were a lot of serious debates and interesting discussions and comments, and it was fascinating. Um, and I just, I don't see people wanting to give that up. Unless they were confident in who that board is. And so that's why I kind of kept making, the more this went on, I learned more. But I realized that if you really want to sell it, if you want to call it selling it, I don't like saying it that way. Um, if you want to encourage people to look at it closer, they need to understand that the select board is it's not a select board anymore. The town council is a merging of the planning. Definitely are.
So Joe, it's interesting how what you just said is maybe, but summarize some other objections, you know, number of, it's got a huge disparate and you got very concentrated, which is planning itself, or zone, you know, and that that's good information that.
Yeah, I think often some of us really talked about it just in terms of like the town's a three hundred nine dollar industry, but really, it's it's worth a lot more than that. Um, especially about the people that are on that.
It's a very persuasive comment. I think all of those were very helpful. Because I think there is enormous fear on the island. I can't imagine in the world we live in that people are going to lose control over the last thing that they still have some control over, which is how the land, uh, well, what is the shape of this island? Um, my daughter's an urban planner, so we hear these discussions around the table and so forth, but but people are concerned about that. Um, I think that there were people, is this just another way for developers to come in and get control of the town? So they could build more houses or um, whatever. You were caught in the middle of this huge battle. Three years of STR or whatever it is. I mean, um, I had to miss last year's meeting because I was having surgery, but I um, I remember at one point thinking, I'd rather have Bobby DiCosta and the and the the guy, the, remember at the meeting where the two of them were getting ready to punch each other two years ago? A town meeting over their livelihoods. Bobby DiCosta has to have clean water and the guy who owns the landscaping company has to use fertilizer or he's not going to have company. I mean, lots of serious battle. And they had to be taken out and spoken to by DiCosta. I don't want to see it degenerate, but there are really serious things here that are worrying me. And you got hit because it was a mess. I mean, the whole thing was a mess with all these thing, one thing after another. And so I'm not in favor of maybe the change. I I want to be perfectly clear about that. But I feel sorry for you politically that you got caught in something that you couldn't have anticipated.
Joe. I gotta go. Oh, sorry.
Um, thank you, Joe. Uh, there was, there was a question that I had raised last year at one of these meetings, and that was something that actually did not fall within uh, the belly weight of of the original warrant article, which led to the formation of this committee. Um, and that is to do, have we done an analysis of what is wrong with town meeting? What can be done to fix it? And that was not the um, the the mandate as was perceived and discussed by by town council study committee um, following from what the words of the actual mandate. So I think that's a fundamental issue and, you know, as as a voter, as a resident, I want to know what is it that's wrong with town meeting? Why am I giving up my vote, my direct ability to vote on issues? To appoint somebody that might or might not vote the way I want? Or may be influenced by some lobbyist groups, whom I don't know. And and I think that's a real fear that people have, is that they're giving up their vote, whether it's for zoning issues or or whatever. Zoning is is really important, increasingly so. But but we've seen at at some of the town meetings, discussions on issues, which uh, you're sitting there and you're thinking, well, if we had a town council, probably that issue would have just gone straight through and we would not have been able to object to it. And 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 that's a real concern. So I think.
Oh, you would, you would have been able to object. And that's, I think that's, that's not, I don't think, I don't think that's accurate, but.
You may, you may be able to go in and object, but I don't think it would have been in the same forum in front of all of the other voters and to have such an open forum for for discussion. I think that's a real concern.
Um, one comment I would make in response is that if you're a citizen and you want to bring something to town meeting, you've got to put it in in November to get it done in May.
As a one.
And the town council can respond more quickly than that process. That was part of my reason for bringing that on. I don't want to be stuck with November fifth as the deadline for me to deal with something in May. And town councils can deal with it on a more timely basis. What's my answer?
Can I make one comment, Ted? Because I do think this is important. This really, this is a representative democracy and it depends who shows up. And so if you trust the four percent that show up versus the, maybe it's, maybe it's ten percent, but I can make a really good argument that nine people can represent me just as well as everybody comes to town meeting. And that's really what it boils down to for people. I'm not saying that I disagree with you. Like, I really like our select board now. I think they're awesome. And I think the five of them actually really represent the whole island really well. That's five people. So I could make an argument that them becoming nine people could better represent the island and the island's needs than the seven hundred who have showed up. So a- and that's just how I look at it. It it's not like just because more people showed up, the island was better represented. And that's what I learned beyond this committee, and I'm only grateful to Curtis to put this forward because that really clarified a lot of things for me.
Can I add?
Oh, Lucy can go first. No, that's right, Lucy can go first.
At the Jones comment, and so like the seven hundred and fifty people that show up at town meeting, they're the people that like know what's happening.
They care.
To do, and they care. So I would, I would put my, you know, against them, the science of people, like nine people. Because they're well informed, the people who stage at the end are pretty well informed. And, you know, it's a higher percentage than nine.
Yeah, I just, I think the.
I I I would dispute, I would dispute whether they're well informed, but that's my own personal.
On the floor as well.
If I can't. The discussion I'm having right now is the point, right? Like, this is why this is why votes don't go the way they go, because even in a group that's been participant the entire time, we're still debating the base level details, right? There's not enough information for people greater than the folks that went to town meeting even to have above that base level discussion, right? It wasn't in our mandate to try to educate and do outreach on things. I mean, I I think we've all seen a gajillion town initiatives or even initiatives from nonprofits where you can't expect to generate a product, not produce a final product, not really have a plan for getting it into the hands of people with a form to answer uh, answer questions and get it addressed on a regular basis and expect to be successful. Just can't. It's impossible. Because the minute that there's doubt or questions, you you're going to lose, right? That that's just, that was it. And I'll be the first to say, right, like, I'm all for improving town meeting and we've said it from the start, right? However, it plays out, it plays out. And I think the town government study committee produced recommendations that are still getting voted on it, even this past town meeting for charter amendments to work towards towards different town meetings. I think, you know, Campbell Sutton put an article for having four town meetings a year, you know, but any one, three specials that um, made it on to the floor. So I I I think that's there, but I I think we owe a report for what our process was. I I don't think it's really possible to distill down why the votes went the way they did, because I think Lucy's reason is going to be different than Ted's, it's going to be different than Curtis's, it's going to be different than Joe's, it's different than Tom's, that you have to create a chance for people to have an informed choice, and I don't think we did that. And it's not, it's not our fault. I mean, we generated a product and just ran out of time. It's a big topic and it's, it takes years. I mean, I think it, I think about other much more simple town initiatives that had, you know, eighteen, twenty-four months of outreach and education before they started. And they still struggle, right? This is monumental as far as the change. So I I think it's just a little patience and a lot more discussion, but I don't necessarily think that this here is the form for that to happen.
Okay, so it seems to me we're in sort of reasonable agreement that as the committee members said, you know, that we're in agreement that we ought to compose a report, sort of wrap up this phase of our existence, and then I suppose from that, deliver that, that with the two charter um, draft charters to the select board. Here's what we've done. And then I think we ought to sit back and say, okay, what what do we want to do going forward? Do we want to continue to be connected to the town and be a sort of a town you know, appointed or do we want to recruit additional people? Do you want to, I mean, who wants to stay on board and continue to try to educate people?
Joe, just have one point. I thi- think something that the committee never quite answered because there was thirty thousand other things to talk about, whi- which was at the end of this, forget the vote on either of them, but kind of what article, how this article would come about? Right? Would it be a town-sponsored article? Would it be a citizens-led article? And kind of in this discussion, just myself as an Nantucket voter and as somebody who goes to town meeting and is also on the select board and all the different hats I wear, that it seems like to me that this is better led as a citizens-warrant article than it is the select board, e- if the select board was even willing to, and and I I have, I have no idea what my colleagues think, but I I've said this publicly many times, I would not vote to put this article for the town on that. I don't think it's a particularly good thing for the legislative body, excuse me, the executive body to dissolve a legislative body. Um, so therefore, I think, I think it's a better a better use um, of folks' resources for it to be citizens-led uh, moving forward.
No, I think I I agree with you. I mean, I think, I think in the end, it should be a citizens article that gets on to a town meeting more. And hopefully this committee or the successor committee can resource and execute a plan to educate voters, communicate voters, deal with voters, um, so that the article has the best possible chance again, from our side perspective, to get a successful vote.
The question I have is my article, which created this. Uh, what's the conclusion? Submitting the report, does that end it or does it have to go and be voted at town meeting? I mean, what ends?
I saw, well, as I remember, I gotta read the article. It seems to me that the vote at town meeting of of an art, of of a post-artikel is.
That hasn't happened because the last vote was informal. So we have to bring it back for a vote, a definitive vote.
I think so. I mean, but if you're going to do that, I think you might as, you you only want to do that if you've, if you've done.
Well, submit the report.
Well, we can, but the submit the report is sort of a relatively straightforward. We can write the report, summarize what we've, what we've discussed. You know, make a recommendation to the select board, and that sort of wraps that up. But then then you have to turn to the citizen, a citizens article at a future town meeting asking for a vote.
The citizens article is still open. It hasn't concluded. I got, I didn't bring it, but we have to close Article eighty-one one way or another.
No, excuse me, Mister Chair. Not necessarily. I mean, it's it's whatever the select board, since the select, one of our primary duties, as everyone knows, is to create, prepare, and distribute the warrant. Uh, and it, the committee was, was you did your article, passed it in town meeting, select board agreed to do that, town agreed to do that, to create the committee, did a spot, got nine folks on the committee and and all that, so that there isn't any requirement to do anything beyond that. That there there could be an ask, but I think the discussion, the way it's going here is um, that a citizens-led effort after this. I think the report is a good idea because I think it will be there to be on the, on the, out there, to be, to be that for for history, so to speak. Um, but I, there's no requirement.
I just want to make sure Article one closes properly. That's the reason I'm asking.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I I think I agree with Tom, right, is if we generate the report and the rec- recommendation of the report is that if this is going to go on to a future town meeting, it should be through citizen request. If there's groups of citizens out there that are interested, they could certainly pick up the torch and go with it, just like anything else, but I think as far as satisfying the original article, I mean, I I know the finance committee motion included to bring it forward at another town meeting. But I think if you can inform that choice with more information, which is what this committee did, and say we don't think it's appropriate for the select board to put it forward, it should come forward in this way. I think that satisfies the article, satisfies the intent. And that's what's there. Trust me, there are plenty of articles that go through where at the end, you know, the motion maybe isn't followed perfectly because reality gets in the way of. At the end, you know, the motion maybe isn't followed perfectly because reality gets in the way of of perfection.
Thinking of John Giorgio's comment and I want to just make sure. However, it's concluded that eighty-one is floating out there in the ethereal.
Okay, well. To just to get to a practical step down. I have a couple of um. Draft reports from other towns that have converted. Courtesy of the folks at the Collins Center. I I'm happy to um as chair, take the first stab at. Sort of composing a summary, you know, a report, an end-of-process report, and I will circulate it to the committee who can. Sort of work on that. Um Lucy, I'd be happy to. As the as the lead of the opposition, I'd be happy to let you take.
Do we need a motion, Joe, to ask you to do that?
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we do that?
I make that motion that Joe writes draft final.
I'll do the first draft and let the.
That'd be great.
Hi. All in favor?
Yeah, I.
I I think that's, I think that's a fair next step. Um and then if if the, if the committee would like to get together, you know. Let's, let's say we have the. Four weeks or so, I'll try to, try to put something together in the next three to four weeks. And then if we want to get together and talk about. Sort of future steps and future direction, I'm happy to do that. Or if you want to, if we want to sort of wrap this up and put a bow on it, we can do that as well.
Also, Curtis, if you want, you can have that. If once we approve that report, you can distribute that to the groups that need some support to reach out to. We'll have something to say then.
Okay, well, I'm thinking the select board is going into its summer mode. So. Uh when we should try to get it in, do we want to get it in August in one of the meetings or do you want to wait until September to submit it? Yes, who cares? I mean, I just.
I'm not sure it makes a ton of difference. Um let's, let's see how long it takes us to come up with a reasonably. You know, organized report. It'll be, have the, you know, the two draft charters as as appendices and, yeah, we'll go from there. Okay.
See how much time you got, Joe.
That's what's the grand case. I'm a little busy. Any other thoughts, comments? Any, any comments from the? Public?
I want to make a comment about Curtis. I'm still like really chuffed that you did this and how much dedication and effort you've made to it and I. I just really admire you.
Not me, I just.
Did make it happen.
Thank goodness for Joe being chair.
And it really encourages, I think, a lot of people to stay involved and connected at this time of day, regardless of their age. And I love it. It's amazing.
Well, you can put that on my tombstone.
As long as we're making complimentary comments about each other, uh I would like to thank publicly Anthony Mel and Patricia from the Collins Center who. You know, were were invaluable to this committee in terms of providing us with. Legal, regulatory, technical and all sorts of contents um. That, you know, that may, putting the, putting the charges together um of a a doable task for this committee, so.
Here, here.
Here, here, here.
I have nothing else. Anybody, any other comments?
I'd like to thank you for the ability to speak as a member of public because at many meetings, it is denied and I think that. This issue isn't over. It will come back again in one form or another. And um unlike my life in the nineteen sixties, when I would have been at the barricades waving the, you know, the stick. Um I think the democratic process is working. In this organization, so.
I really have a good team and. Thank you all. Yeah, thank you, thank you. I'll serve it.
Yeah. No, you, yeah, you guys have been so gracious with public comments.
The public process.
Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? All in favor?
Hi.